You please don't be standing for the invocation. The county attorney, thank you so much for bringing us together on this Monday evening. Thank you for the rain, thank you for the cool weather. We ask for the citizens and our staff and council who came with them. We ask that as we deliberate, make decisions for our town. We show humility in listening to the perspective of our ladies, our colleagues, as well as citizens. We do what is best for this town. We ask that your proper years and hearts do what is right and always do what is right. We pray for the county colleagues of mine, staff, and many people who work hard to run this town. With the residents, those who are being renewed, we're honored here tonight. We thank you for the police, our fire, and all of staff and the service. Be with us tonight through our deliberations. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Please join me standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Good evening, council, staff and members of the audience. Welcome to the Town Council for Monday, October 24th. Time is seven oh one. For the record, we have all council members except Mr. Egan and Mr. Allen, both are out of town or will not be actually in the council. With the five of the seven council members present, we have four. And the time is seven oh two. The first item on the agenda is introduction, introduction of new employees. I'm going to call upon Chief Jeffery Stapleton and followed by our Fire Chief to introduce Dave Reynolds.
Evening, Mayor and Council.
Evening.
I'd like to ask Jeff Stapleton and his family to come up. Jeff is our newest officer. He started a couple of weeks ago and I just wanted to read a bio on him. Officer Jeff Stapleton has 28 years of law enforcement experience with the last 20 years in multiple supervisory capacities. He's a graduate of the Law Enforcement Management Institute of Texas at Sam Houston State University. His extensive background also includes narcotic investigations involving both state and federal cases. He has extensive training in tactical situations. He is SWAT certified and is trained law enforcement officer locally and abroad in Brazil. Prior to his law enforcement career, he spent eight years in the military, including the first Gulf War, Operation Desert Shield, Desert Storm. His unit was attached to Second Marine Division, the US Army's first Tiger Brigade, which was part of the lead element in Kuwait. Please help me welcome Officer Jeff Stapleton to the Sunnyvale family.
I just called the family, they're tight, right? Come on up here, Frederick.
Why is nobody talking? I am all your servants. Mayor and council. At this time, I also have a fireman. I'm not going to say he's new, he's kind of old in a couple of ways. He's one that we have had before when we were getting really rolling and he took a sabbatical for a little while. And but he came back, he got back on the porch. So it's my pleasure to welcome back Jake Reynolds, bring his wife up here as well. Jake has about 19 years of EMS and fire experience as well. I believe your wife works dispatch for the state, so that's all we do.
Welcome back Jake.
He's scored, right?
All right, moving on to the announcements and announcements. Pursued in Texas government vote section 550, that all follow one fight. Mayor, council and staff have reported various items. So council, do you have any announcements? How about staff? I'm assuming you have an announcement, Steve.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council. The registration for turkey trot is open. The race is on November 24th at seven, starts at 7:30, but lineup at 7:00 AM. And participants can register at townonSunnyvale.org/turkeytrot. And then there is a link for t-shirts on that website as well. And then we have our Veterans Day ceremony on the 11th of November. And we've gotten quite a few veterans who have emailed me and would like to be recognized, as well as staff members.
Thank you, if you are now registered for Sunnyvale, ask them to sign up if you can recognize them during the November 11th. If you please call the fire or the court service.
And Mayor, just to be clear, I think the Veterans Day event starts at 6:00 PM, is that correct?
Correct.
6:00 PM on November 11th, correct. And turkey trot starts at 9:00 AM on Thanksgiving Day.
Seven. So the race. Lineup for the turkey trot is 7:00 AM and the race starts at 7:30 AM on Thanksgiving Day at the school.
Okay. Anything else, any other announcements? Okay, moving on to the public comment portion of the agenda. This is the time members and audience may come forward and speak to the council on any items other than personal matters or legal matters, all items on the agenda. If you'd like to come forward and speak to the council at this time, you may do so. Now it is coming forward, so I'm going to close the public comments. Moving on to the recognition portion of the agenda, I'm going to call upon Chief Hogs to come forward to recognize the officer of the quarter presentation by Chief Hogs.
Mayor and council, a couple of months ago, I implemented a new a new program in the department, which was Officer of the Quarter. And that was basically just to recognize officers that show up with good attitude, work hard, and are an example to their peers. So this will be our first one we're doing. And I'd like to present this tonight to Officer Miguel Portillo, if you'd come over here. Miguel came to us about a year ago and he's been an outstanding officer and he's a good example to his peers. And I have a little brief paragraph from Sergeant Brumman, who supervises Officer Portillo. As he says, "As Officer Portillo's supervisor, I've had the privilege of working with him on shift and getting to know him." Officer Portillo has been an asset to the shift and the department in multiple different areas. Officer Portillo is always one to bring energy and excitement to the day and he always comes in ready to hit the ground running. Officer Portillo is and has been willing to step up and assist whenever called upon, regardless of it is to assist with the call and arrest, transporting a subject to the jail, translating for fellow officers who are assisting in other agency. Officer Portillo displays the qualities of an officer sought after by the Sunnyvale Police Department. So it's my honor to present Officer of the Quarter to Officer Portillo.
Good evening, the family also. Good job, Chief.
I agree.
All right. Item number eight, proclamation. I have a proclamation to be made. Let me read the proclamation. Proclamation of the Office of the Mayor, whereas municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas. And whereas more people come in contact with the municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined, a public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court. And whereas state law authorizes a municipality creator appoint or elect a municipal judge for a term of office, the Sunnyvale Municipal Court is a state court and judges are members of the state judiciary. And whereas the procedures for the Sunnyvale Municipal Court operations are set forth in the Texas Court of Criminal Procedure and other laws of the state of Texas. And whereas the town of Sunnyvale is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair and competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us and that judges and court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promote public confidence in the integrity and impartiality of the judiciary. And whereas Sunnyvale municipal judges are not policymakers of the town of Sunnyvale, but are bound by the law and the cadence of judicial conduct and are required to make decisions independent of the governing body of the town council, town officials and employees. And whereas the town council recognizes that the Constitution and laws of the state of Texas contain procedural safeguards in criminal cases for all defendants, including indigent defendants, and supports the Sunnyvale Municipal Court in complying with such legal requirements. Now therefore, I, Sadi George, Mayor, do hereby proclaim November 7th through 11th, 2022 as Municipal Court Week. Now therefore, be it for the result that the week of November 7th through 11th, 2022 is hereby recognized as Municipal Court Week in recognition of the fair and impartial justice offered to citizens by the Municipal Court of Sunnyvale. In witness whereof, I have here to send my hand and cause the seal of the town be affixed here to this, the 24th day of October, 2022. If you can have Jennifer Calation, Cora, or Rachel Ramsey, tell her secretary to come forward to receive the proclamation. All right, moving on to the consent agenda items. We have item number nine, 10, 11, and 12 on the consent agenda. Council, would you like to move any of the items to the consent agenda? Okay, if not, can I motion to approve consent agenda item nine, 10, 11, and 12?
Motion to approve consent agenda items nine through 12.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Freeman, second by Mr. Clark to approve item number nine through 12. All in terms signify? All opposed, motion passed, fireball, Mr. Allen and Mr. Egan are absent. Moving on to the public hearing item of the agenda. Discuss council on an act upon the first reading of ordinance 2022-32, amended the future land use plan, the comprehensive plan by change in the future history used for the proximal year 4 acres on Highway 80 Front Edge from the front of the property roughly 1,400 feet from the town right away from medium density residential to importage.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The town's existing future land use plan was adopted as part of the town's comprehensive plan in 2017. It's important to remember that the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan are separate from these zoning districts that we've created. The town is currently considering a request to rezone approximately 38 acres located on the southeast corner of Long Creek Road and Highway 80 Front Edge Road. As part of that request, town has been asked to review the appropriateness of the town's comprehensive plan, specifically the future land use plan's designation of the area as medium density residential. The current property owner and proposed developer believe the site is more suited for commercial and would fall underneath the employment commercial use of this category. And the specific zoning request is subject to a separate agenda item and staff would recommend considering an amendment to the comprehensive plan and future land use plan prior to considering the specific development request. In reviewing alternative land use designations for the future land use plan, staff doesn't believe that that additional residential development is appropriate in this area, given that property is cut off from any other town right away except for US Highway 80. Another consideration for determining future land uses is the current land uses of proximity of the area along the same corridor. To the west of the site, at the corner of Long Creek Road and US Highway 80, the property is a zone highway commercial. South of the properties are zoned SF4, but are cut off from accessibility due to the existing floodplain. And east of the property, fronting US Highway 80 with SF3 and SF4 zoning districts. North of the property is more Highway 80 and more land zone highway commercial. Based on the land use categories in the comprehensive plan, adjacent land uses and site limitations, staff agrees that the most appropriate designation is employment commercial. The Planning and Zoning Commission met on October 19th, 2022 and voted 5 for and 0 against to recommend approval for this item. Staff recommends approval. Since the last time we met, the lines have shifted a little bit to the north there. So there is a little bit more of that that medium density residential like we had talked about after y'all requested us to have to go back and look. That's the determination of where the line needs to be drawn for this map amendment.
So we true the line, we true the line rule again?
So the way that it sits right now, you see the right angle directly underneath where Long Creek Crossing turns there. So. Let me see.
Can you point out? We don't have a map, okay, that's fine.
I don't have a map on me. The property lines existing for the other properties there basically designate where the line is now for the highway employment commercial and medium density residential lines exist. That right angle there on the west side is where that line goes directly across. Underneath that, where it is employment commercial, is that change of 8.8 acres that we're seeing.
Is that a field?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let me open up for public comments. At this time, if anyone from the members and audience would like to come forward and speak to the council on item number 13, you may do so. Now it is coming forward from the chambers, we are going to close the public comments. Council, do you have any questions or discussions, questions for staff or discussions on this topic? The applicant here, would you like to come forward and say something? Okay. You're good? I'm sorry? Oh, the applicant from this one, right? That's the town's comprehensive plan. Council, any questions or comments or discussions on this topic? Okay, if there are like offer a motion, item number 13.
Motion to approve item number 13 as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman, second by Mr. Finch to approve item number 13 as presented. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? All in terms signify? All opposed, motion passed, fireball, Mr. Allen and Mr. Egan are absent. Moving on to item number 14, Mr. Allen is going to excuse himself. Thank you, sir. Item number 14, discuss council on act upon the first reading of 4022-33, change in the zoning on one property totaling 38.20 acres, located generally at 536 Long Creek Road and 600 US Highway 80 from Highway Commercial and single-family 4 as support to a planned development, allowing for indoor and outdoor boat storage, brewery or distillery, bulk material sales and storage, contractor shop, contractor storage yard, full processing and storage, furniture repair and upholstery shop, gym or health fitness center, research and scientific laboratory, riding academy or equestrian centers, air stewardess security and mini warehouse, indoor and outdoor vehicle storage facility warehouse, wiring and woodworking and planning mill with alternating development samples.
Yes, sir. The request for a review tonight is for a property located at 536 Long Creek Road and 600 US Highway 80, consisting of roughly 38 acres. The applicant's request is to rezone the property from Highway Commercial and SF4 to that planned development district with three sub-districts. These three subject districts being requested are Highway Commercial on single-family 4 base. The Highway Commercial Track 3, as you see here, sub-district would extend from the front of the property to roughly 1,400 feet back. This area would allow for all loudly uses by right within the Highway Commercial zoning district as amended. In addition to these uses, the following are being requested by the applicant to be allowed by right. Indoor boat storage, brewery and distillery, bulk material sales and storage, contractor shop, contractor storage yard, furniture repair and upholstering, gym or health fitness center, cell security, cell storage security and mini warehouse, indoor vehicle storage facilities, warehouse and woodworking, warehouse and woodworking and planning mill uses. The applicant is also requesting that the following be allowed to be permitted with a special use permit to be reviewed by the town council at a later date, in which they would have to bring forward a site plan to be approved with that SUP. These uses include food processing and storage, research and scientific laboratory, as well as wiring. The Highway Commercial 1, Track 1 sub-district would be applicable to the new portion of the Highway Commercial area as described in the picture shown here. In the sub-district, uses would be allowed as they would typically be allowed in the general Highway Commercial zoning district. In addition to these uses described in Track 3 sub-district, the following are being requested by the applicant to be allowed by right. Outdoor boat storage and outdoor vehicle storage facility. Track 2 here is for, is going to be a base zoning of SF4. And the applicant is asking for the rights to bring back a riding academy or equestrian center use at which time for a site plan approval and SUP from y'all. Currently, the riding academy equestrian center use is allowed in single-family 1 and single-family 2 zoning district by SUP and the applicant is requesting this to be allowed by right in the sub-district on this property. Do you have any questions regarding the tracks?
We come back to you. We open up for public comments. For the record, we have one resident located at 534 Long Creek Road. Is that you, sir?
Yes, sir. Troy Smith, 534 Long Creek Road. I own a property just to the west, the north side of their property. And it's zoned highway commercial, but it's never been used for commercial. There's a house on it, 70 or 80-year-old house, I tore it down a few years ago. I'd planned to build another house there, I didn't really see any prospect for developing commercial on one skinny long acre.
Now, can you point out, can you point out this area?
Yeah, it's actually, they've got a kind of, they've got a border around it, that black line, that's my property.
And how big is that?
It's one acre.
Okay.
And I didn't really see any good prospect for it other than the house. But I don't have a problem with them expanding and making use of their property. I was just hoping that there could be a fence in between there. It's since mine's zoned Highway Commercial, I don't think they're required to have any screening. And there's like, I think, three of their buildings, like 30 feet from the property line. And on part of it, there's some bamboo and stuff, you know, they don't have to just look into the backyard. But the rest of it, you can just see right over there. And there's like a gravel driveway that they drive down through there. The contractors usually park there because it's really not adequate parking. I see that they put 28 spaces, but those aren't close to those buildings. And so realistically, the people aren't going to park there. They're going to park right next to the building they're renting, which is right there by my yard. So I just want to see if they could put some kind of screening. I'd be fine with that, especially with the BSF, you know, you've got a lot of cars and that opens it up to wrecked cars, inbounded cars, you know. And I don't know if they're going to do that, but I think the possibility is there if they're granted permission. And I don't have a problem with that, I just, I'd like there to be some kind of a fence there, some kind of screening. And I don't have a problem with that, I just, I'd like there to be some kind of a fence there, some kind of screening.
I think what they said is indoor, indoor then to storage, this is what they have.
So up until roughly this point here, where his property ends, I believe, is where track one would begin. And basically, everything would be required to be indoor on this, this front portion here. Uh, outdoor storage would have to be, would have to be. Sorry, outdoor storage would have to be, uh, screened to the requirements of the, the ordinance as well. Which is a, is a eight-foot tall, by minimum, uh, board-on-board.
Between the property lines?
No, between the property lines, just for outdoor, uh, storage. Which would include, uh, all of this area here, those backyards eastward in this concept plan.
I don't speak for him, but I think I read through, you already wrote the trash and don't find over to a property, is that true?
Yeah, that was another thing that, they repainted everything and, uh, and ripped the fence down, it's just a barbed wire fence, old fence, but I called the owner and said, hey, why'd you rip the fence down? He said, I sold the property, so I was like, oh, okay, so I don't know the new owners, but when they tore that fence down, it made all the trash from their contractors that were, I guess, already renting from the previous owner. You know, foam and it blows over, then you mow, it's, it's just a pain, but I started putting limbs there to try to keep the trash from blowing over or something. I, I figured they were going to put a fence up because they started painting and stuff, but I don't know if they plan to, maybe they do plan to, I, I didn't see it in the plan, so.
They can, we can ask in a second.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to.
Is that a requirement at all, that sort of requirement, right?
No, sir.
Okay.
And there's three shops right there, but if the contractor shops are allowed to do granite, which is fine, but if they're cutting the granite and all that, it's literally thirty feet from my property line, it'd be nice to have some kind of screening, you know? I know it's zone highway commercial now, but, you know, if I build anything, it's going to be a house, not a jacket box or something, you know, it's not going to be. It's just too skinny and long of a property to do, really, and I'd have to get a special permit to even build a house, it's, it's too narrow of a lot.
All right, sir. Anything else, sir?
No, that's it.
I, I have a question for you. So, your intention is possibly building a house on that lot?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and it's zone properly for him to build a house in that lot? But him with, you know, setbacks and whatnot, we would have to take a look at, but it's zone for that.
So currently it is zone highway commercial?
It's been zoned like that for years and years, but there's an old. Yeah, there's an old house on it, and I bought the house, and it just got dilapidated, it tore down. And then they told me, hey, to build a new one, you're going to have to get a change to a residential, and that's fine, we'll probably do it. And we'll probably, you'd probably get the permit too, to, you know, for the variance on the, on the width, not being wide enough. Not for the road furniture.
Renate would say something, ma'am?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Think about that, and you can listen to the applicant, sir. Anyone else from the members of the audience who would like to come and speak to the council? Okay, and open up for, let's post the public comments, the council, and open up your discussions or questions.
I guess we're going to have the applicant come?
I'm going to, but I look at, you have a question, okay. The applicant would like to go forward and speak to the council.
Customer is now one forty Brentwood Heat Wives.
Who do you have, sir?
Derek Salzer, one twenty-nine North Collins Road, Sunnyvale.
Do you like to add anything? Do you like to add just a consent to the applicant?
Something? In, in the new plan development, all the contractor shops, if they have any kind of outdoor material they could blow to the adjacent properties, it has to be fenced and screened by that eight-foot fence that, um, Phillip's talking about. There won't be any outdoor vehicle storage in the front part that's adjacent to, uh, the property that we were just talking about. We do, we are aware that there are contractors in those current buildings that they've got some trash that's blown over to, uh, the property that we just mentioned. But in this new ordinance that we're proposing, uh, that will be contained and wrangled, or whatever the word is, that we don't want trash blowing to the neighborhood.
And I believe a lot of the trash that you're giving is probably from building three. And, uh, he's got the air filter shop right there, and in the corner, he has this open area where he sometimes store filters. So as soon as this is approved, he will be required in this area, which will probably be contained.
Oh, good. I think it's a solid area.
Anything else? Anything else?
No, only that after the last time we presented this, uh, you guys told us to go back and work with the town staff. So we worked with Phillip and Burton, we spent a couple hours going through, um, the UDO, which everybody loves. Uh, one hundred and forty-two possible uses that could go on this property. And after a couple hours of looking through every single one, the list that Phillip read just a minute ago is what we all came to a consensus about. So that's what you're getting presented tonight.
One question, the SF four, again, that's being a residential, just always took me apply, you know? And your goal is to put a equestrian?
I don't think there's a goal for that, but it is certainly a use that I think makes sense back there. If you're trying to find what you're going to do with floodplain property, um.
I just want to weigh it up as SF four.
Well, it's already SF four, so, and then the PD is just.
Basically, there's no, you can't, it's a five-year floodplain there? It's, it's unbuildable.
Yeah. It, it's just a unique use, along with the winery and other things that we thought might make sense, and just in our discussions with the staff.
Correct.
And no one has to do that, but I think it is a creative use for land that otherwise might just be the country's forever. Which is not a bad thing.
Yeah. This will be it?
So I, I definitely appreciate Chad's put in the work and coming to, you know, these actually specific uses. I have an issue with three of these. Winery, brewery, distillery. How close are they to a residential house? From where they're at? And is that something that, I, I personally don't have an issue with, you know, I know what breweries look like these days, I know wineries look like these days. I've actually been to a distillery that's nice. I could live with a brewery or winery, I'm not sure a distillery is something that I'm comfortable with to begin with. Um, but knowing that there are residences that are on that street, how close are they going to be in proximity to a brewery, or just any general place that sells alcohol? And is that something that we're concerned about?
So they would have to follow the, the TABC requirements and apply for a permit for them. They would also have to adhere to the current UEO requirements as far as, uh, distances between property lines.
Do we have any idea what those are currently, and would this actually meet those guidelines? Is here's thinking, is if?
I know it there.
Okay, go ahead, please.
It's three hundred feet from door to door to a school or a church. But it, I don't know that it speaks to a house.
It doesn't.
Or a apartment.
Doesn't speak to a house? No.
Okay. But if you want to estimate the footage, uh, Phillip has his fancy scale over there probably. That the closest point that we could put a, built, uh, to put a building that would have those uses in it to a house, my architectural estimation is at least three hundred feet or more.
I think this comes back to me by the, with this whole by right issue. And I do not feel comfortable with a distillery being able to be there indefinitely. The brewery I'm okay with, the winery I can live with, but a distillery is not. So.
Was it issued, I thought, I thought winery is issued, especially term by right.
No, 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 the, the winery is, especially, you are correct.
But the brewery is still raised by.
We can add that to the SUP if you would like.
So you'd have to come back and get approved before everyone in? And you guys would be okay with that?
Yeah.
We don't have any, um.
That's, that's honestly, it's my biggest concern, is that.
We're fine with that.
We're doing by right, and then twenty years down the road, you guys, you know, someone wants to come in and pay crazy money for it, and the next thing you know, they just build, you know, all alcohol distribution center right there, we can't do anything to stop it.
Understood.
Any other comments or questions, the applicant?
Thank you, guys.
So was it, was it two separate items, or just one brewery or distillery?
You want me, so like, so me personally, I'm okay with, um, I mean, I, the distillery, in and of itself, I would like to be in the SUP. Um, if you guys would be willing to put a brewery and distillery there, that would be great, just so we have the final say if, um, you guys decide to go that direction.
Good with that.
Okay.
If we do the both?
I believe it's under one category, but yes, I'll do it both.
Anything alcohol-related, you can put it under, as you have your dinner, it should be.
Mister, Mister, do you have a comment, sir?
Nope.
Mister Frank, anything?
No.
Anything else?
Yes, sir.
So the only comment I have is the brewery and distillery used to be under SUP. Everything else, they are asked for by right, council seems to be good, is it? Okay, anything else? Okay, thanks for walking in, appreciate it, and I took our time back and forth. Phillip, anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Jeff, anything? Yeah, if, uh, we're done with the discussions here, uh, give me a second. Can I have a motion with respect to item number fourteen, please?
Motion is approved, item number fourteen, with changes discussed from moving alcohol-related items to the SUP.
Motion made by Mr. Clark, but second by Mr. Freeman to approve item number fourteen, the exception of, uh, brewery or distillery to remove to SUP. Everyone heard the motion. Are there additional discussions? All in terms of signified? All of post motion pass, four, Mr. Finch, Mr. Clark, Mr. Freeman, Mr. George supporting, uh, Mr. Eldridge has to excuse himself, Mr. Allen and Mr. Egan are absent.
I mean, George is going to make a suggestion, I guess, seeing some of the items seventeen, Mr. Elder Chastain himself from as well, can we skip to that one? They have to go back and forth.
If that places you, yes, sir, absolutely.
They're going to do seventeen real quick.
Oh. If you guys are okay with that, so, I don't keep going back and forth.
May I take, uh, discussion action item portion, item number seventeen, discuss and, discuss concern active for the mentally construction manager at risk, contracted the loan, construction services, to include the trip road trade connection project. That we, that we want.
Uh, Mayor Council, I'm going to ask Burton Bar to, to present this, and then I have a couple of comments at the conclusion of his presentation before council opens up to questions. We're going to pull up the PowerPoint presentation, um, I guess I'll go ahead and start, and then I'll finish while Burton does the middle part. Mayor Council, this was brought to my attention that there was an existing, uh, plan, um, some time ago to connect the Spring Lake Estates, uh, subdivision to the trail that follows along the western border of the Falls subdivision. Um, the, that subdivision is built out, that trail connection was never made. I had a resident from that subdivision inquire three or four weeks ago with me where, what the status of that was, I was not aware of that project. Uh, but the feasibility of making that connection happen now is very, um, is marginal at best, frankly, and it just so happened that we were working, uh, with Burn Construction, uh, our construction manager at risk, on the, uh, Horse Barn and Fire Station project, uh, which included in that project was to go ahead and connect a trail along Jobson to the fire station, but it was going to dead end there on the eastern edge of the fire station property. So, um, the reason that this is kind of a, appears to be a last-minute project request is just because of, um, some information that came to light since I've been, since I started as the town manager here, uh, and I guess a very small window of opportunity to utilize some economies of scale from our Burn, uh, construction manager at risk contract, and some of the competitive bidding that they, that they achieved as part of that. So there's a small window of opportunity before that project is complete, which has necessitated a, um, a fairly expedited decision-making process, uh, on this project. So I'll ask Burton to go ahead and give you a full overview of, of what staff is recommending.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item before you, as our town manager pointed out, is, uh, amending the construction manager at risk contract with Burn Construction Services to include the trip road trail connection project. Um, in October twenty twenty-one, the town had applied for a grant for Texas Parks and Wildlife. Ultimately, we were not recommended for funding. However, um, I'll just show you some site photos here. If y'all want to see any of these, just tell me to stop. Um, so this trail connection would add approximately two thousand forty-five linear feet of trail. Um, it also would add approximately sixteen hundred and fifteen linear feet of pipe fencing. Um, the trail connection would be eight foot wide from Spring Lake Estates and Falls, that's the existing width. I believe it'll be seven foot around the fire station, and, uh, some planned drainage improvements would prevent standing water, uh, on the trail. Those are the four neighborhoods, Spring Lake Estates, Falls, Stony Creek, Homestead. Uh, areas in yellow there would be the new addition. But, uh, those, that linkage there would allow, um, all those different neighborhoods to be connected. Project is estimated not to exceed four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and, um, concrete for the fin, for the, uh, trail, um, pipe fencing drainage landscape, there's also a seven percent contingency. So just a few more things about this. This was presented to, um, I guess first and foremost, it was presented to the four B Economic Development Board at the October eleventh meeting. They recommended that we bring this project back to them at the November meeting, hold a public hearing and approve the trail connection and related funding as a new project. Uh, just want to point out, as a part of the construction manager at risk process, bids for all the trades and materials have already been competitively bid. We know that, uh, utilizing economies of scale, favorable pricing related to construction of the fire station, a minimum of ten percent cost savings would be anticipated since there would not be any additional mobilization charges. Uh, Texas local government code requires at least one public hearing to undertake a project, and the funds cannot be expended until sixty days after the specific project's been published in the local paper. A notice of the public hearing, uh, for this project will be published in the Sunday, October thirtieth, twenty twenty-two edition of Mesquite News. Uh, staff recommends that town council authorize a four hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase to the guaranteed maximum price in the contract between Burn Construction Services and the town of Sunnyvale for the town of Sunnyvale Fire Station and Horse Barn Facility project.
And Mayor, I'll just add, just as an update to that dollar amount, um, at, at work session, uh, just about an hour ago, uh, one of the suggestions was made to go ahead and, and extend the pipe rail fence, the metal pipe rail fence on the eastern edge of the Horse Barn property, um, abutting the, the Falls subdivision for, to provide a more uniform look. I don't have the exact, uh, unit measurement, um, to give you an exact cost of what that would be, but, uh, I think, uh, we would probably estimate that to be an additional thirty thousand dollars, and there is a seven percent contingency, so, uh, if, uh, council is inclined to go ahead and extend that, uh, fencing on the eastern edge, I'd suggest, uh, to increase the recommend, recommended amount to four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, uh, as opposed to the four thirty. Again, there is a seven percent contingency in there, I think that should be adequate to cover that cost, um, but we'll have to verify that with the contractor. I feel like that would be a comfortable amount, and I do believe we should still hopefully have some savings, so the four sixty increase in the guaranteed maximum price should be enough to exceed amounts.
Thanks. Let me open up for public comments. If anyone from the members of the audience would like to speak to the council, item number seventeen. would like to speak to the council, item number 17, you may come forward. Now, let's come forward, so I can post the public comments. Question one for, and it's been discussed in the 4B as the 430, but now it's to the council, so we should be able to take a number higher than the addition score, correct?
Yes.
That shouldn't be a problem.
Yes, not a problem.
Okay. If there was any question for our staff, Mr. Clark?
Do we know why we had to not get the grant?
I mean, not specifically. There were, it's, it's always competitive when you're talking about grants. This was the small community local park, so ours was more of a trail connection, grant application, whereas some other municipalities may have actually been developing full-blown park. So may just be, you know, in the scoring criteria, maybe some of those other projects reviewed as, as more community benefit versus this would be more specific to Sunnyvale.
Right, okay, no, thank you. I'm glad we're doing this, or at least we're gonna discuss and vote on it, but this is something that we, I personally, we're excited about, and we've been talking about this for a long time, so thank you for all the hard work and given us, both of us.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. To the other for discussion, county discussion, item number 17. Mr. Freeman, you done it, sir? Mr. Freeman? Okay, you done, and I call for a motion. Council, keep in mind that for 60, I suppose, for that, please.
I'd like to make a motion on item number 17 to make amendment to the manager at risk contract with Burn Instruction and increase it by $460,000 for this trail that we discussed.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman to approve item number 17, with the added scope of high rate for the extended trail area, but cost not to exceed $430,000. Second, Mr. Clark, second by Mr. Clark. They're running the motion. All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed. Follow, Mr. Finch, Mr. Clark, Mr. Freeman, and George supporting and no against. Mr. Eldridge has excused himself, Mr. Egan, and Mr. Allen are out. So not in the lead. Moving on, item number 15, Jeff, I think it was your type, you'd like to be table that topic for the next time, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Counsel, do we need a motion for that, Brenda?
Yes.
Can I have a motion to table item number 15, until the first meeting in November, which will be 14th November?
Motion to table 15, till the first meeting in November.
14th.
14th.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Clark to table item number 15, until the first meeting in November, on the 14th. There's second, second, second by Mr. Freeman. They're running the motion, the additional discussions. All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed. Follow, Mr. Egan and Mr. Allen are out. Moving on, item number 16, discuss concerns and active for ordinance 2022, that's there for adopting a water resource and emergency management plan for the general center, to promote responsible use of water and to provide penalties, and/or the disconnection of water service for noncompliance with the permissions of the water resource emergency management plan. That be Mr. Creed, who wants to?
Okay, mayor and council. So this is just a update of our draft contingency plan. The D C Q requires that every five years, we review and update it. I couldn't find the last update, it should have been done in late 2018. So this is just a cleanup to, to adopt this ordinance, so I can start working on it, it's supposed to be due by 2023. There's no changes to what is already existing. I just needed to get an adoption of the ordinance in place. It's the exact same thing we've had since 2017.
Okay, let me open up for public comments, item number 16. Now, this is coming forward across the public comments. Maybe I misunderstood the whole thing, and I, I ran through it. Are we saying that if the city starts violating that the, the water usage, they can be fined $2,000 and the service can be disconnected? Seems to be too harsh.
That, that is what is allowed by law. Our ordinance is not that strict. I'll go back and make sure. I don't think this sets $2,000 requirement in there.
No, that's...
Up two.
You said two, right, on three?
The municipal court judge sets the actual fine, but for a health safety violation, which this would be, the statutory limit is $2,000.
So that's not that.
Set up two to the max.
It's just the maximum. I'm not aware of a court on any first or second offense even has gotten close to $2,000.
They're just gonna shut someone's water off because they're spreading more water, right?
Yes, sir.
They're not, right?
We haven't been enforcing by turning any water off, no, sir. We've just been educational on it.
I, I understand we have our own spot, boy, you know?
Yes, sir. No, it was just showing what the town attorney said, it's just demonstrating what, what they can be fined, but it's not necessarily.
I think that our, with our current staffing workload, I think right now, the public education and self-fondating is, is the approach that we've taken at this point as opposed to the enforcement side. But certainly, that's, that's an option for those violators who refuse to comply after they've been noticed a violation.
I just want to make sure we, it's this one time to treat people right, you know, I understand what it's, okay. Counsel, additional discussions on this topic? Wait to head there, ask them forward to the discussion side.
Yes.
Okay, if there are no other discussions, can I have a motion with item number 16, please?
Motion approved.
Second, motion made by Mr. Eldridge, and second by Mr. Clark to approve item number 60, that's postponed. Everyone heard the motion. Are there additional discussions? All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed. Follow, Mr. Egan, Mr. Allen are absent. Moving on, item number 18, council and mayor request, Jeff, just remind about the garment, silver smell issue. We're wanting to get them on, can I? Over here, please. Are there additional staff?
A dead item.
We, yeah. We're working on. And you have a dead item. Okay, moving on to the item number 19. Can I have a motion to adjourn the executive session? There are two items, section number 551.071, consultation with attorney legal and private medical compliance, and that is number 20, 551.074, personal matters turned negative.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to section 551.071 and section 551.074.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman, there is a second, second by Eldridge, to adjourn the executive session. All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed. Follow, 758. We are in executive session.
Okay.
Okay, now time is 8:35. We are back in open session. Counsel, do you have a motion based on discussions in the executive session?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize a lawsuit against Adrian Crane at 436 Poly Road for coevaluations.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman.
Second.
On item number 19, and second by Mr. Finch. Everyone heard the motion. Are there additional discussions? All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed. Follow. Counsel, can I have a motion to adjourn, second? Motion made by Mr. Freeman, second by Eldridge. All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed. Follow, we can adjourn. Counsel, thank you very much. Staff, thank you very much.
Good job, folks.